It's 12 o'clock, we're in the Hall of Fame meeting.
Starting today.
First item is Chris Frye. Thanks for having us on here, Chris.
I appreciate y'all coming. I think I'm gonna start with just a little bit of the history of Castle Hills, how we got here. My dad actually bought the first piece of this property in 1952, which happened to be the year I was born. And it was, he bought 525 acres from a guy named Frank Lake Chevrolet people for $83,000.
Wow.
$3,000 down and $80,000 up. So it's a little less than $160 an acre. And basically, he acquired most of the rest of it between there and 1966. By 1966, we were about 2,500 acres and acquired it from, in a bunch of different tracks. Morgan's tracks, but basically from a bunch of different tracks. And he was, he was limited in his, in the partnership that he was in, that they could not own anything outside the partnership, except, you know, stocks or something like that, but except for one contiguous family farm. And so that was basically how he ended up acquiring this. And he, he was an oil guy, so he actually, in deciding where he wanted to try to look for land, he actually contoured land prices. And he basically found a spike in land prices around 75 that went back down and went back up around Preston Road, and then went back down and then went back up around 35. And so he bought the closest to downtown Dallas that he could buy at the lowest price. Now, obviously, that was before the toll road was conceived, and so we, we got the benefit of the Dallas North Tollway, which were about four miles to the west of. And basically, this is where, as kids, we kind of grew up. I mean, I learned to hunt and fish out here. I actually worked out here one summer till I ran a tractor in one of the bar ditches and they decided that that wasn't a talent of mine. So I camped out here one summer for about a month and a half, kind of set up a camp just on the other side of the lake down there. I had a kind of a lead to camp, and I basically was out here for about six or seven weeks that summer. And, you know, we, I guess we really didn't think about development of the tracks at all until probably the late 70s, early 80s. And at that time, I really wasn't working in the organization, but as I said, we started, you know, I tell people the story, we started working on 121 bypass in 1982 with Tech Stock. We gave the right of way in 1989, and the road opened for traffic in, I think, August of 2008. So just 26 years after we started on it, it was magically there. And really, that's kind of the, the story of these large land development pieces, is that it takes a long time, and it takes a lot of pre-work before things actually start happening. We started, we worked with Lewisville. I remember the first meeting I actually had with Chuck Owen, who was the city manager at that point in time. And I tried to make a deal with Chuck to, I, I agreed with him, I made a proposal that if he could give me San Tarry Sewer, that I would not seek annexation by anybody other than Lewisville. And Chuck said, well, you don't want to develop into us, because you want to develop a heap. And I just like, he said, you're trying to do it like the Red Rabbit told me in the briar patch. And he said, no, I'm not going to consider that. And so we really ended up starting discussions with Lewisville in probably January of 1996. The negotiating team, I told Chuck, I can't negotiate with your whole staff. And so he agreed to limit the number of people in the work. And I think it was Chuck, Ron Neiman, who was the city attorney at that point in time, Jimmy Leach, who was director-
Director of Community Development.
Okay, Director of Community, and Jean Lewis.
Director of Planning.
So those were the, the four people in the room, and I had a lawyer and an architect so that we could work on the design guidelines. And we cut that deal really in not much more than about 60 days and signed the agreement with Lewisville, I think April 1st, 1996 is when the council passed it. And so we're now, what, 30, 23 years into that agreement? The council at that point, this is my, I'm working with my fourth mayor and third city manager. The mayor at the time that we did this was actually Bobby Mitchell. The other council member for Mike Metzger, Rudy, was on the council. Dean Euclid was on the council.
Jean Carey.
Was on the council. And Ronnie Kate was the other, other council member, was the other council member. Bobby left pretty soon after the agreement and went over for the county as the county-
Commission.
County commission. And Chuck didn't stay very long after the agreement was signed either, and started, started working with Claude. And Donna was assistant city manager under Claude. And really, those are the only three members of, of city managers that I've worked with over the course of the agreement. One of the things that, that we've always been pretty proud of here at Bright Realty at least was that there has never been a time we've asked the council to take action that we haven't had the support of city staff. I mean, so there, there's times they've been wrong and disagreed with us.
No comment.
But we had always compromised and came up with something that the staff could support. And I think it's made it a little easier for the council to deal with is the fact that the staff has been in concurrence with what we're recommending or what they, with what we're asking for. What we were recommending, I guess, was what we think of it, they, they were recommending that the council should do. So we've done that, I think, and I think I talk about it, there's really only been one vote in that entire 20-year period that was not unanimous, the council. And it was when I wanted to do the rollover curbs, and the fire marshal at that time said, well, if you want to do that, then I need you to widen the streets to 33 feet. And I said, no, we can't do that. And so Dean actually voted.
That's it.
Don't put that finger.
So, I mean, every other vote, and I remember every single one. I think the first 10 years, 12 years of the development, I pretty much did all of the heavy lifting with staff. I mean, last 10 years or so have really been damn Bright Realty. And I'd like to tell you, I have a brochure in front of some of the council members that was probably a 2003, 2004 brochure, that if you open it up, it kind of shows one of our land plans. What it looked like, what we thought it was going to look like in 2000, I think, '03 or '04. You know, generally speaking, I think we've kept to it, but it has evolved. I mean, you know, and, and that's the thing that's happening in the world today, particularly in the development world, is it's continuing to evolve very quickly. I use as an example, when in the first stages, first three phases of Castle Hills, we had a requirement that everything was alley-served, but that the out, the cars had to enter from the street. So the garages were in the rear half of the lot. And that, and what we were trying to do, the purpose of that was to try to force interaction into the front of the houses instead of into the back of the houses. Always had a very big focus on the parks. We basically said we wanted to have a park within walking distance of, of every home. And since I was from Texas, I defined walking distance as three blocks or less, because I don't know anybody who walked any farther than July. And so that was kind of the approach that we tried to take. But as, as we started developing further, the big issue that we faced was what was acceptable in the, in the early, in the mid-'90s, which was a two-car garage, no longer was acceptable. We needed three-car garages. And if we tried to do three-car garages with the garage in the rear half of the lot, there was no backyard left. And so we had to adapt the plan to what the marketplace told us they needed, which was three-car garages. And so at that point in time is when we ended up trying to figure out, how do we make the neighborhood look good with a three-car garage? And so that's why we used the wooden garage doors, it's why we required them to either put an aggregate down or, or color the driveways, was to mitigate that bald expansive pavement in front of the house. So all of those things were focused on. And there's a lot of little subtle things that were done in the development that, that people can't really see or don't really notice. But it was six-and-a-half-foot wide parkways instead of five-and-a-half-foot, five-foot wide sidewalks instead of four-foot. And I said, I don't think, at least I couldn't, walk side-by-side down the sidewalk on the four-foot sidewalk. So we wanted to do a five-foot sidewalk so that people could walk down the street side by side. Again, the idea was to, to draw people into the neighborhood, into the public areas. And the big focus on the parks was because I thought the way people in a new neighborhood would get to know each other was through their children. And if I could draw the kids into the parks, then I could draw the parents would follow. I actually picked all the playground equipment, probably for the first 10 years, and I was always a big proponent of what I call fantasy play. So we had the dragon park, we had the castle park, we had the fire engine park. And we put equipment in here that we thought kids could engage in fantasy play with. And when I grew up, you know, there really wasn't near as much organized sports and stuff as there is today. Your parents sent you outside in the morning and told you not to come back in till lunch. And so we were trying to figure out a way to do that same thing with the children at Castle Hills, was to bring them into the neighborhoods and get people to know things. I think one of the most rewarding things that anybody ever said to me, it was one of the homeowners out here called me, he met more people, he lived, he was building a house here, and he said, he had lived in Plano for three years, and he said, I've met more people here while I'm building my house than I did in my three years that I've been building in Plano. And really, that's, that was the point of what we were trying to accomplish. You know, and so we, we have, we do have a bunch of rules. And I mean, you know, we still are primarily an HLA-driven community. And shockingly enough, I still probably have enough votes to control the HOAs. And we have a meeting every year. I still, I think I, we've been doing these HLA meetings since, I think, '99, and I do it myself. So we are self-managed HLA. We get, we do, at the very start of the meetings, we, we do an announcement, we show how the votes are going to work, and then I'm probably going to get to elect my board. But then I tell them, and I have, I've said, I'm going to stand up here and answer questions until you stop asking them. I mean, in the early years, some of those were four-hour meetings. And that's, that's what we did. So we, we didn't always tell people yes, but we always told them why we were going to say no, or why we were going to, why we had done it the way we had. And that's really been the approach we've taken at Castle Hills, it's kind of the approach we've tried to take with staff. We've tried to explain to them why we're doing what we're doing, why we're seeking the approvals that we're seeking, and then how we're reacting to the way the world's evolving. One of the things that I put on, on some of the council members' desks today, which is, I think, one of the biggest issues that, that as a developer we are facing today is what is going to change in the development world as a result of mobility changes? And there's one of those studies on there that says that about 10 years after the widespread regulatory approval of autonomous cars, that the number of the cars on the road will drop by 75%. I don't know what that means for the development business. I mean, I don't know what it means for density. I don't know how it works. Now, there's a, a second study that's done by, I think, Payne Weller, or PricewaterhouseCoopers, something like that, that, that disputes that pace of change. But it says, nobody disputes that it's going to happen, they just dispute the pace at which it's going to happen, okay? And so, and the reason that they, that the people who say it's going to happen fast say it's going to happen is because of the cost savings. They say an average, a family with $60,000 median household income will save $5,600 a year with this type of autonomous car systems. And that's a pretty big change. I mean, you know, you're 10% after tax of dollars and changing your income. I think it will motivate change. And I don't know the pace that it's going to happen at, I don't know exactly what the effects of those are going to be, but those, that's the way the world is going. I mean, I'm not saying that I ever did it, but I certainly heard of people my age that might have actually driven after they had drunk. But, you know, the kids today, they really don't do that much. I mean, they Uber, they Lyft, whatever you want to call it, but when they're, when they're drinking alcohol, they're, they're not in the vehicles. And you're adjusting to that in the development world. We talk about building Uber stations in the parking lots so that they can drop off and pick off, pick up places. You know, and so, you know, back in, I guess it was 2004, 2005, it's because I'm getting ready to turn it over to John Ward and Rhett Crocker, who started, who I started working with at that point in time. I decided that we needed to expand our view of the world more than what we could just get here in Dallas. And so John Ward works with a firm called 505 Design. They have offices in North Carolina, Boulder, and San Francisco. Is that correct?
Yep.
Rhett Crocker is with a company called Land Design, that, that, Rhett's one of the most imaginative land planners that I've worked with in, over the course of the last 30 years. And they, they've pushed me to think differently, they've pushed me to incorporate new ideas and thought processes, and they've told me what they're seeing happen in other parts of the world. You know, I, I tend to think, as I say, I've said to some of the staff here, is that we think that from 1950 to 1990, US developed using a methodology of separation of uses that really hadn't used anywhere else in the world, okay? It's, it's just in the United States. And it's really stopped working as much here. I mean, where the, where the growth is coming, where the people are saying that they want to be is in these mixed-use areas, smaller stores, more connected, more walkability. And that's really been the focus that we've used to drive our, our thinking about what we're developing and what we want to put on the ground in the future. So I'm going to kind of turn it over to Rhett and John to kind of go through what we're talking about now.
Thank you, Chris. Come up, John. I'm Rhett Crocker. Thank you guys for, for having us. We're going to take a little walk through Castle Hills, much of which you guys have seen or are going to see today on the, on the bus tour. There's going to be a lot of information, we're going to try to get through it, and we have a hard stop, get through it, have some Q and A, but what, what John and I wanted to talk about was, to Chris's point, we really, the two of us were fortunate to start working almost 15 years ago, and really to start thinking about the future phases of this almost 3,000 acres that's, that's evolving. And to Chris's point, a lot of the information that, that he passed out, whether it's mobility, technology, we track that as a firm, we see things all over the country, all over the world. It's real easy to get analysis paralysis, get stuck on these, these things, but the most important is to, to be mindful of it, to be thinking about it, and to know how to incorporate flexibility. These things aren't happening overnight, we're not changing everything overnight, but I think the, the beauty of what we've been trying to think about at Castle Hills as we go into the future is how are we flexible? How are we going to evolve? And this is, this is becoming a place, as Chris said, and we'll walk through, that it's very diverse, and diversity in product, diversity in price point, density, all of those things, and that's what we're trying for. And I think that's what's going to make and continue to make a successful Castle Hills, is going to support the greater whole of the community. So I'm going to walk through along with John, we're going to go through really what we call the story. We're going to then talk about a lot of the things that are happening today, many of which we'll see on the bus tour, but I just wanted to hit on those because there is a lot happening out here today, as you all know. And then we're going to talk a bit about the future, which is primarily focused on what we refer to as Crown, which is the area west of 121 here, where we see the future really evolving there.
You want to go over there?
Yeah. The one thing I'll say is, and Rhett and I working with Chris for, for 15 years, is I don't think we or I've ever worked with somebody who has thought so far out in the future from day one, in terms of what he's tried to create here and the kind of diversity and things that he's been, he's done, where he's known, you know, 20 years ago, that if I'm going to build a place like Crown, I need to create a place for those people to live, to go use it. And every single thing that he does, and I, and there isn't a day that we don't walk into his office and he's always questioning, always thinking, always worrying incessantly about what's going on in the future and how do we respond to that? And so having said that, I just wanted to get that out there. And I think that, that you talk about the community, the kinds of things we're talking about in terms of being bold, inviting, independent, and creating a community that hopefully is unlike anything else in the market, and it becomes that way because it's not just a master plan community, right? It is a community that has an incredibly great, diverse group of uses.
People.
So, you know, what is Castle Hills today, right? It is really thriving. It's a, it's a real community, and as Chris says, there's so many different, you know, this new multifamily product that we've built over at Discovery. You know, how do you bring a very diverse, different, diverse group of people together to make a community so much better and, and so much thriving? You know, certainly healthy, we talked about the trails and the interconnectivity of everything that we're doing, and I can remember day one, the first thing Chris said is, well, how do we tie all this stuff together? How do I get, how do I get from one place to another? And what are going to be my choices and how we do that? And you talk about something that changes, it's whether it's a bike or scooter, or, you know, all of this stuff, we're not even sure how people are going to get from one place to another in 10 years. Certainly growing, I think that's good, that as this community continues to evolve, people want to live in places like that, that aren't stagnant, that continue to change, that continue to evolve. And, you know, I think we talked about the diversity of uses, the density and the look and feel, and I think that, you know, Chris, you alluded to it before about the notion about densities and creating the kind of places that, that people want to go. So, you know, and that represent your, your values, your aspirations of the user that's here. There is no question that's what's driving an awful lot of what we're doing, and Chris talked about this, about no longer separation of uses, but total integration of uses, because people want to be around other people, and they don't want to necessarily want to be around people that are exactly like them. That used to be that, well, that's, that's sort of ending. So the notion about creating places to live and work and play, but that is really seamlessly integrated, and, and that is just everywhere in this country, that's what people are trying to do. And so this, this notion about residential next to office, next to, to hospitality, next to retail, all of that stuff mixed together is what, really, where people are going, what they're looking for, and what they're trying to get to.
Yeah, I think the, all of these, as John mentioned, these, these values, every project that we think about, we go back to that. And it's, you know, how are we differentiating in the market, but how are we going to be unique for the future as well? And I, you know, we say it all the time, we, we see a lot of, we're very fortunate, we see a lot of projects, similar scale, similar conversations across the country, but, you know, I give, I give Chris and Eric and the, and the whole team here a lot of credit, everyone here in the room actually a lot of credit for stepping out and looking forward, even the, well, the first phase of Discovery and having that conversation. I remember those early conversations, that we could have easily talked ourselves into something a lot less dense, a lot easier. The market really wasn't necessarily there for the, you know, in this, this area, for the podiums and the intensity of the amenities that we're putting in, but it was important to the bigger picture. So that's, you know, we're not just thinking about these in one development at a time, but really, every move we make is how does it affect the whole region, the whole community? And it really is these concentric rings that come back, come back together. The, you guys are familiar with the overall master plan, just to orient you, and again, this is going to be a quick fly-through of everything that's happening today, and then the things that we see coming in the future. So just to orient you, 121, Josie, we are sitting right here today. So the, what you see under construction today, the realm, the office building that's up here along 121, so we're going to take a look at all of that, but you, you see, you know, this doesn't exist today, we'll talk about this, but this is really where we see the, the intensity and the density of development that's really going to support the core of the commercial, the office, the entertainment, all of those uses over time. So this is, you know, this is its own village, and we're really thinking through that product today. And then we're going to spend a fair amount of time really talking about the, the Crown Center vision and how we're thinking about the future of how people want to live, how they want to work, how they want to play as it comes to that project. Today, help me out here, I think there's about 4,000 homes here all in, and about 1,400 higher, attached residential units as well throughout the district. 300,000 feet of, of office space, that includes the, the one that's, that's under construction at the realm, the village shops, all of that. So there's, there's a lot that's here today, and there's a lot that's happening still. What we refer to as the realm, and you see this when you're going on 121, you see the office building that's under construction today. This is, this is how we envision, this is 121, Castle Hills Boulevard, Windhaven. So what you see today is the, really the first phase of what we refer to as the realm, which is the higher-density mixed-use along 121. And this is a little bit more detail of that in terms of the land use. This is the office building that's under construction today. It's about 230,000 square feet, give or take. There's a future, the future of this is much, is a different type of density. It's a, it's a higher-density residential, mixed-use, retail, ground floor, restaurants, but really, starting to create that, that fiber and entertainment core that's not only, again, for the community in the area, but certainly well-connected and part of that amenity system that we, we've envisioned for a long time for Castle Hills. There's also future residential that you see here, again, high-density, we'll talk a little bit. Bright has under development about 70 units that are single-family rentals. Again, but that, that's just another example of really looking, what's the culture want? Where's the market going? It's not just about homeownership and owning a lot, but there is a huge market that we see around where people want to live in that single-family home, but they don't want to own it anymore. They don't want to have that maintenance, they don't want to have that burden, but they want to have that lifestyle. This is a very much in-process rendering, but just to give you a flavor of how we're thinking about the density and what we may start to see evolving along 121. So 121, looking to the west, so what you see in the background is what we're going to talk about, is the, the vision for Crown. And this here is the current office building that's under construction, and then you start to see how the, the density of the village will start to evolve over time and build up around that. A little blow-up of what's, what's happening today with the office building, we refer to this as the Crescent. Again, this is one of those amenities you see here that we've envisioned for a long time, and, and it's not only going to become the heart of the realm, but it's going to be a major destination for folks who live in Castle Hills, a major amenity in terms of, you know, being able to sit, restaurants out along in this great, about an acre park, it's going to be highly amenitized, fountain, play area for kids, you know, even thinking about some, some interim or temporary uses of before development happens, how do we continue to, to keep activities happening, and how do we continue to keep programming? Because the idea is to, to continue to keep this as an active place, an entertaining place for the whole area, and it's not just restaurants, it's retail as well.
And I, and I think that this ended, for me, this shows a lot about how Chris thinks, that if you're going to do an office building and you want to activate the ground floor, and they sort of say today in any development, make the ground floor the best place it can be, that instead of just even just sticking those restaurants in the bases of the building, the idea of pulling that out and using that to frame the plaza that creates a place that isn't just for the people that are using this, but a place for the community to come to. And I think he's, he's always thinking about how you begin to layer that stuff into a project, and as a residential building, this- And as a residential building that's right next door, that's in, in documents right now, again, additive with retail below, residential above, office, all of that. And, and you get a real vibrancy when you do that.
You want to talk about that?
Well, I just, some of the notions about Class A office and the quality interior spaces and whatnot.
This is, you know, again, gives you an idea of the, the public area that's being built as part of the, the office building and the restaurants. And again, this is to John's point, and Chris mentioned that we push him, well, he pushes us as well. This is something that would have been easy not to do. And, you know, in terms of real estate and the phasing of when do we bring this on? Do we bring it on early? I think there was always the conversation, and I always tell everyone, you never apologize for your first phase. You always go in strong, you want your brand to be there, you want people to understand who we are and what we're going to be to come. And this is the piece, along with the, the building and the density, but this is what we believe is going to become known as, let's go to have dinner at the fountain or whatever this ends up being called, and the kids' play area or the, the concert that may be happening here. This really is going to become a hub for this area. This is a, again, a lot of things happening. This is a, a piece of property that's south of Windhaven. So this is just some ideas, there's an existing pond there today. This is that same office building in the background, so we're looking north. And again, this is, this is just an idea that we've had to say that we have to be diverse. We have to allow for, what if we want that, that other type of restaurant that wants to have the setting along the waterfront? Or, you know, what if there was higher residential here with that amenity on the waterfront, but within a half block or one block walk of that, that Crescent Fountain that we just showed you? The, just west of Castle, at the corner of Castle Hills Boulevard and Windhaven on the, on the west side of the, the realm, this is under construction today, is about 80 condo units. And it's very similar to what has been built over at the, the Village Shops. So again, another type of use. I, you know, for, for a long time across the country, condo, condos went extinct through the downturn. And really, this is something that is coming back along with townhomes, that for sale product, but it's, it's treating the, the market and what they're looking for is something unique, something different. Again, some people want to own something, they don't want to own a lot, and this is a great opportunity. And it's in small doses, but the ability to do more is, is there in the future. This is some of the, the rendering or the pictures of the 74 rent, single-family homes that are, that are currently occupying and continuing to, to be built. And I think doing very well, right?
Could always do better.
He reminds me of that daily as well. So everything that we just talked about, these are, again, here's 121, Castle Hills Boulevard, Windhaven. This is the 74 rent, single-family, the condo, 80 condos that I mentioned are here. The balance of the realm, this is the office building with the Crescent open space.
And the condos and the residences share a pool and an extra...
Correct. Yeah, there's a, good point. There's a, there's a, a pool and a, an amenity that's located here for those uses as well. Everyone has seen, and I think this is, again, I, I think this is a tremendous example of really building something unique and differentiated in the market that I think has resonated very well. The Discovery Phase One, about 450, 60 units total?
Four twenty-three.
Exactly what I said, four twenty-three. I don't do math in public, Chris knows that too. So this, again, the, the type of amenity that, that we were able to build here, not just in, in multifamily worlds, typically when you say amenity, that means a pool and a fitness and a clubhouse. This is spectacular in terms of being truly an anchor park and being something for the community.
And another 39 multi-story units here, no larger than 14.
Correct. Correct. And again, that's something that was in the original master plan when we did this, I don't know, six, eight years ago, when the planning really started for this, but the market wasn't there yet. And it wasn't ready to say, we can do these multi-stories of different, you know, it's almost like a, I call it a stacked townhouse or a condo-type unit. It just wasn't there yet, but we preserved the, the space to come back and do that in the future. And today it's ready and that's going to be starting soon. Another shot, I think this project is beautiful at night. Driving through last night, it really is, really is a nice, a nice project for the, for the area. What you, what you see, these three buildings and the lake and amenity were, were Phase One. We're soon starting on the fate, what we call Phase Two, which are the two buildings, or it's actually, yeah, it's going now, sorry. The two buildings that are here, adding, how many units are there?
360.
360 more units.
Three twelve.
Three twelve. John mentioned, and, and we talked about in the, in the brand of Castle Hills, certainly the play area, but the healthy living and the connectivity. And this is something that's, that's everywhere. Certainly we have golf, we have great outdoor space and parks, but every community across the country, I always say the, the new anchor of every community is time and outdoor lifestyle. How can I get, where are the trails? How do I bike? What are all the connections that I can make? Whether I'm going to use them or not, I want to know that they're there. It's part of my community and it's part of that brand. And we've been thinking and incrementally, looking at this over time, is how do we continue to think about connecting the southern, you know, south, where we are today, as development is happening here, New 544, the alignment, all of that is happening. There's thought that's hap, that's continuing to evolve as we build about how do we get those pedestrian linkages, the bike paths, all the multi-use paths that are, will connect all of Castle Hills. Some renderings that we've just been thinking through and some ideas about how these spaces may, may come about. Not all of them will be just trails, some of them will be trails through, through parks and amenities that, that we don't have today. The Village Shops, we'll see that on the tour, but certainly there's been an evolution there, the addition of the townhomes on the corner, as well as the, the condos above the retail that I think have done very well and has added, again, another layer of density and another diverse use there.
You know, I mean, what's interesting about this product, you talk about Chris trying to be ready for the market. So he goes, I'm going to do some, some rental units at, at, at the Village Shops. I'm going to make them a little bit bigger because I think the person that wants to live inside of, of Castle Hills and at the Village and across the lake will do a little bigger. Well, as he goes to market with that, all of a sudden people are going, well, wait a minute, I want to buy one of those units. I want to, you know, I want to own that. And so he's always very willing to sort of look at market and understand that and create the place that brings yet another diverse kind of person. But we keep going back to that, but there's not a single mindedness with him. Well, except for V's. And the, but, and that's what drove doing the condos that we're now doing across from Castle Hills, that, that the market was so strong with that, that now we can evolve that product and continue to do that. And anyway.
So that's a quick fly through. You know, we were happy to, we're all, we are all here, happy to answer any questions. I know we'll see a lot on the tour. I forgot something, obviously.
Well, I think, you know, and I, it's really, you didn't forget it, I forgot it, which is the, the reason that this has all happened, okay? And the reason it's been able to be happened is because of the public-private partnership with Louisville. I mean, you know, the, the fact is, the economics of these things without that public-private partnership don't work. I mean, and, so, you know, it's, it's really, yeah, it's a bright realty development, it's also a Louisville development. I mean, and, and the fact is that we view ourselves as part of Louisville, we view what, working cooperatively with Louisville staff and council is the only way we're going to be successful with what we're doing. And, and so, look, do we butt heads occasionally? I mean, we do. And that's healthy. I, I mean, you know, it, it really is. I mean, I don't like when I have to change things, but I, I like when I hear the rationale behind it, okay? And if the thing makes sense, I, I also understand that Louisville has a long-term future and a long-term vision of what they want Louisville to be. And I have to fit into that view just as they've been cooperative in allowing me to address what I'm trying to accomplish with some Castle Hills. So I'm open to questions at this point in time with...
I want to run through Crown real quick. We've got a few minutes, right? We got a few minutes still? We're good? Yeah. So now, and we'll, I want to leave enough time to questions, but as I mentioned, that's all of the things that are happening today. And what we've really been thinking about in all...
We're getting to the spec office for the...
I'm getting ready to. Yeah, you're right. Thank you. What we've, what we've really been thinking about, actually for, for years, but really in the last, the last several or a couple of years, is what's the future beyond everything that we just talked about, all the opportunities that we have here? Where's the future going? This goes back to what Chris was saying, there's, there's all kinds of, you know, whether it's mobility, technology, lifestyle, all of that, you know, none of us have a crystal ball, but we see things, we see the evolution, we see how people are making different choices. And it really made us start to think about what we refer to as Crown. So the 150 acres that sits west of 121, to, to Chris's point, this is one that's already started with a great partnership, the, the lake and the park amenity that was completed last year, which is right here. We have what Chris was just mentioning, the, the first office building as part of Crown is going to be starting soon.
Junish.
Junish? Junish for this area, so that'll be right here. So previously we had thought of this and, and the, the previous master plans and probably the one that's in your, your brochure there, was that this was going to be what I call the Office Park of Castle Hills. Once we had the density here and the, and the diversity of housing type, this was going to be the place where we would provide the major employment opportunities. It still is. And the vision for that is it still is that. But the vision is that we know that it has to evolve, it can't just be this, this Office Park that at five o'clock every day, the last person turns the lights out and then they come back in the morning. It's caused, you know, there's traffic problems with that. There's truly, you know, all of us who own businesses or, you know, the, the, the culture that's coming out and the workforce, they don't want to work in that Office Park any longer, everywhere. They want the diversity, they want the, the youth, the different uses, they want the walkability and they want the, the healthier lifestyle and the amenities that are there. So that's really what we've been thinking about here. You want to go through some of this?
So I think, I think Brett sort of hit it about, again, diversity of uses, diversity of, and then, you know, how do we take workspace to workplace, right? That whole environment that we're in? You know, I could go on for hours about average being over in our culture and it's happening and everything, it's happening in retail, it's happening in food, it's happening in residential, it's happening in office. If you're average, you're done. And not only you're done because you're not going to be relevant in the culture, but you're not going to get the people that you want to live in your community and work in your community because that's not where they want to be. So, you know, this is a big thing about, they, they don't want, just want a space, they want a place. So workplace, I mean, I think that's live place, play place. I mean, I think these are all, when you put all those together, you get a great place. And, you know, and again, diversity of uses, densities of people makes a great place. And we talked about that before. So all of these slides begin to talk about the emotional qualities about what we're doing. So, you know, Chris is focused on this and we're very focused on, on all of this stuff, you know? Yeah, we have another saying that says people don't go to places like who they are, they go to places how they imagine themselves. So you all have, you know, this is who I think I am, and you look for those places that represent that.
So a, as we think about this, I think it's important for every, you know, in, in our world, what, what we do for a living and myself as a planner, is understanding what's worked in other areas, what hasn't. Oftentimes we get the best answers from what hasn't worked or what's, what's not working. And I think what we're starting, what we're not starting to see, what we're really seeing a, a large push on is this evolution that I said about these Office Park mentality, where people want to, to build their space and the amenities that they want. I think this is sort of, I've used this before, but it's a great series that really thinks about the Office Park mentality of yesterday is all about traffic. Or at least when you start thinking about what are the issues and what are the challenges? It's every morning, everybody goes in, they work, somewhere between five and six, everybody leaves. There's really no, no other reason to be there. It's, it really is a destination and it's a challenge. It's the rush hour in and it's the rush hour out. What we're trying to evolve and what we're showing now is the evolution of Crown and, and Realm. This is really kind of Castle Hills as a whole, but we're, we're focusing on Crown and Realm has the same qualities, is how do we create this diversity to where I'm still in the morning, I've got opportunities, I still arrive to work, but because of the amenities that are there, the residential and the, the mixture of uses that are there, I may be walking to work, biking to work, scootering to work. Scooter phenomenon is crazy to me. I mean, as somebody told me in one city, actually in Charlotte, North Carolina, the first month scooters were put on the ground, 120,000 miles scootered. That's amazing. And it's, it's not just, it's not just recre, I mean, these are, you hear it all the time in the mobility world, that last mile. It's not, it's not just people riding these to, to have fun, it's people who are riding that scooter a mile to, to a meeting or to lunch instead of getting in their car. And it's not all apples to apples, but it's just amazing to me, the evolution that's happening and it's all cultural. You know, I, you, you see all age groups riding these, you guys see it every day. But it really, what we're trying to do is create this place that now there's all these opportunities. Yes, my, my job is there, but I also can walk to lunch. I can go for an exercise before work at lunch or afterwards. I can go to dinner after work, I can go to a show, all without having to leave my car and jam the roads and clog and, and get frustrated because right at five o'clock, everybody's doing the same thing. So this is, you know, it's really, it's, this isn't some new phenomenon, but it really is hard to do. It's hard to think through and it's hard to, to work, to, to work out the details. Same idea here, this is what I call the old models for that silo, every use has its own driveway, every use has its own parking lot, every use has its own building, to this more integrated block structure where it's okay and it's great to have the restaurant in the ground floor or next door, within walking distance. You guys get it? We're certainly thinking through, Chris put a, something on the, I think everyone, about mobility in the future, this, again, this goes to that idea that you can get locked down in this, but you have to start appreciating and thinking through. We're actually working on a project right now where we are, there's now credit being given, even in the traffic study for impacts for how many, this is something that's called OLLE, it's basically an autonomous vehicle that works like Uber. It's point-to-point, pick you up at your house, it'll take you to work, it's not a bus that stops at a station, but it, it's amazing the technology that is behind this. Uber, you guys have probably seen it, where Uber and others are starting to think about how do we move people rooftop to rooftop? The technology is, is, is moving along. Who, you know, who, who knows where it all goes? I talked about the scooter, even the electric bike. The electric bike business is crazy. You know, this, this idea, of course it's making us all lazier, but this idea that, that I can use something other than my car and I'm in a suit to go to a meeting. And it, it gets past what Chris was saying, you don't want to walk more than three blocks? But every city I go to, I see people in suits, what, going on scooters or e-bikes in downtown. So it's, it's something that's happening, it's something to pay attention to. Technology, again, all of this is connected. There's so much technology out there that helps us in every way, from smart systems that learn traffic patterns. So these communities that are developed with mixtures of uses that have traffic lights now that, you think about like the Nest thermostat that's in your house and the technology is like, it, it learns your lifestyle. So this smart technology that is evolving, that learns the lifestyle of the community is pretty amazing, that it, it knows when to turn lights on and off. And so the, everything from conservation to ease and access. All of the things that we talked about in terms of the lifestyle and the health, we, we study a ton of communities to make sure that we're not, you know, just telling Chris and, and the team here that these things work, but they, they haven't been tested. I won't go in great detail, but you guys see these. This is certainly looking, everybody knows what's happening at Legacy and Legacy West and the density that's evolved there. This amazes me. This is a 2001 area, JCPenney and the land that's all around. And then look at what's happening 18, this is probably not even 18 years, 17 years later. I mean, this, amazing, the density and the, the types of density that we're building is everything that we're talking about. It's all about creating that lifestyle, creating an opportunity to be closer, to be walkable, to be connected. All of those opportunities are what's being built there, along with huge office and employment, but those office and employers want to be in this lifestyle. Same thing in Las Colinas, another great example locally with all the office, you see it. The residential is infilling, Hall Office Park just got approval for 2,000 units to be infilled into that Office Park.[1773.83] We see it all over the country. But this is the type of amenity, this is the type of lifestyle that we're trying to create. It becomes energy, it becomes a hub, it's okay for kids to be in the office, in the office environment. So this is the master plan that we've been working through on Crown. It really, 121, really starts to think through, how do we energize this place with residential, with office, with retail, with hotel uses? You know, the previous, what I call previous panels, previous to this conversation, but was really, and what Chris showed in the brochure, truly thinking about this is 150 acres of office or employment, some sort of office employment use. We still think that use is there, we still think that use is viable, but that use is much more viable and much more successful to everybody when it has all of this energy around it. So, and it's also, I think, important to say with Chris was that this is something that complements the whole. So it's not something that takes anything away, this is really something that's added it to the whole community. Some very preliminary shots, but you can, you can start to get some appreciation for the density that we're thinking through. And again, we're, we're just starting to conceptualize here, but along 121, you can really get an appreciation of the lakes that were finished, were here, and the first office building we'll start will be here. Some other angles.
And these things are price point driven.
Yep.
The issue that we're seeing here.
Take this.
Particularly with Castle Hills housing today is that, you know, I'm selling today, we were talking, we had ALH company meeting yesterday up here, and we're selling 41-foot lots with 31-foot wide house for $515,000 to $520,000. Well, I mean, I'm sorry, that doesn't work, I mean, long-term, and generate the kinds of densities that I need. I mean, you know, the fact is, people can't afford that. I mean, you talk about household incomes that are maybe getting up to $75,000, well, that means maybe a $250,000 to $300,000 house. And the only way I can get that is densities in condos and townhomes. And the only way I can make those things work is by removing operating expenses for the commutes and the stuff to get people where they can afford to live in the places they want to live. And, you know, I can guarantee you that when I come back 20 years from now and we have this meeting, that the plan that we're showing today will have evolved again. I mean, it will have changed again. Computing technologies and computing speeds are doubling every five years, and they're telling me it can even have, I forget what they even, cause some quantum computing, that those computing speeds could double even faster, more like every two or three years. And if we start getting that kind of computing speed, all of these things that seem like fantasies are just going to be every day. And we're trying to make sure that what we do here in Castle Hills and Lewisville, Texas, takes those things into account. So, any questions y'all would like to ask? It's pretty simple.
The other thing that we found in the mixed-use diversity stuff that we're doing is it allows you to do better public spaces, because how you're funding that and how you're activating that allows us to really raise the quality, you know, and we show this drawing that everything we're doing is, again, the same thing you're talking about in your community when the residential in Castle Hills is the same thing in this, is creating those outdoor public gathering spaces that are really part of the community as opposed to part of, you know, some office development or office and residential development. I think that's something that Chris works very hard on, and we're really seeing the ability to do better places because the density allows us to fund that, to do it.
I think that's very fair. I mean, you know, all of this is still evolving very quickly. And, you know, one of the things I tell our group is that, you know, I wake up in a new world every day. And the reason I say that is because something changed yesterday, and if we're not adapting and adjusting to it, then we're going to get left behind. And so we constantly do that. Eric has put together a team, I think last week, that are starting to explore how we can put together an autonomous driving test within Castle Hills. I mean, I don't know how that works, I don't know who even who to talk to. I mean, but, but we're going to be looking at it. I mean, you know, we're going to be testing it, we're going to be seeing how we can make that start to work. You know, when you sit there and you think about how this changes economics, if vehicles really do start going away, I can tell you it probably costs $60,000 to put a garage on a house. Okay? If I don't have to build garages, I don't need quite as wide lots, I don't need maybe the same depth, and I can still build the same quality and I can deliver a different price point. How can that not be good for people? So, I wish I could tell you I understood all of these questions, the answers to all these questions, and I don't. I mean, but I know building the flexibility and that what we're talking about is at least a start. So, thank you all for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chris, we appreciate the information your team's provided. Mayor, it is time that we should move into executive session if the council doesn't have more questions for Mr. Bright.
Council will go into executive session if we would have everybody else leave a little bit safer. Will reconvene into regular session.
Mayor, Council, we have a great deal of information to cover with you, and we only have until 3:30 because that's when the tour starts. So please stop us if you have questions, but I'm going to be covering some of the data, and then the various directors who've been hard at work looking at this whole annexation issue will start providing information on their designated areas. So we talked about annexation at our last retreat, and you gave us direction to, number one, to look at a TURS, a tax increment reinvestment zone as an option to use for full annexation. If you remember, at one time, we had talked about more of a district-by-district annexation. As we talked with Mr. Bright and his team, one of the suggestions was a TIF, and as we looked at that more closely, we became convinced also that that was a good methodology and it would allow us to annex all districts at one time, which would certainly be much easier in relation to provision of services. So we've spent the last year analyzing that. I give special thanks certainly to Brenda Martin, who's really been the lead on this part of the analysis. And we've worked very closely with Denton County. The TIF did not work without the participation of Denton County, and so we work very closely with them, with our legal staff. And that TIF has now been adopted. And that, to me, was one of the last steps really necessary from a financial perspective related to annexation. We have also kicked off certainly a deeper dive into various issues such as the staffing, such as the water study analysis, and a complete infrastructure assessment, and we'll be going through that as we move through the material this afternoon. Next slide. So this is just an update to see what's happened in Castle Hills since last retreat. As Chris talked earlier, you can see that there's certainly been a lot of continued development and growth in Castle Hills. Their assessed valuation has increased from 2.29 billion to 2.39 billion. Their average home value has increased again from 480 to 500,000. You can see their tax rates at each one of the districts, some of them have dropped certainly more than others. And I think that's because some of the districts recognize that we're moving towards annexation, and they've been able to begin to lower their tax rates. Also, they're being able to pay off, especially like a district like 1B, has been able to pay off a great deal of their debt. So their single-family units have increased from 3807 to 4,016. Interestingly enough, their outstanding debt at 153.7 million is almost identical to the city's outstanding debt. We're at 157 million today as far as outstanding debt. And then certainly you see the future debt issuances for 1G and 1H. The TURS plan I've already mentioned, this is the key issue that we had to put in place. Just for the audience's sake, please note that the TIF is only on the districts 1G and 1H because those districts are still in the development process, as we saw earlier from the developer. And so there's much infrastructure to still be put in place. And the TIF allows basically the outstanding debt that's already been issued, the debt payments will go towards that, as well as cash payments to Bright Industries as they continue with infrastructure development. So that will all be on a cash reimbursement basis and will avoid any more debt issuances. Next. Eric, I think you're going to take over here.
So, so back in November, we took about 70 employees and did about a three or four-hour run-through of Castle Hills, the cost impacts, things to be considering for annexation, a lot of history, we have a lot of new employees, but to look at the things we need to be doing in the next 12 to 18 months to try to answer some of the questions. Citywide, city service-wide, city scope-wide, communication, community-wide, I thought it was a very successful kickoff, and those departments are underway right now. Keith Marvin in Public Services are talking with Freshwater District, Parks is involved, so all departments are involved in looking at that. But to look at some of the things we talked about, the city of Lewisville, we're going to switch this, it doesn't work on glass, but everything north of 544 and some of the western quadrants of Castle Hills, the city of Lewisville supplies water at pressure, ready to go. Everything south of 544 is supplied by Upper Trinity. They come in to the pump station of Lady of the Lake and go into ground storage, go to elevated, and back out for distribution. So that's how water service is provided right now in Castle Hills. We'll be working with Upper Trinity to look at that contract, it's a long contract, 30-year contracts with two or three renewals. So we're going to be working with Larry Patterson and his staff about looking at how that contract assigns over to the city of Lewisville. Right now, fire, EMS, police, and sewer services are conducted under separate contract. On the east side of Castle Hills, we have a metering station, so we meter in from the city of Lewisville, comes through Castle Hills out to the west, and it meters out. So they pay the delta right now. That will change upon annexation. Through the '96 agreement, it's a very complex document. As Chris had said earlier, we looked at how we were going to read that document and interpret it, but it's heard pretty clear that all preliminary plaits and all final plaits come to the city for review, they go to the Planning and Zoning Commission, they pass on to the council if there's variances, and y'all have seen those through the years, on a plat. And remember, your water, sewer, and streets and drainage are built off of a final plat with associated construction plans. City staff reviews that, we produce final plans, file those at the county. Really, that's about where our permitting powers stop at the city of Lewisville. Engineering site plans, building permits, associated construction permits, and other associated inspections have been borne by the Denton County Freshwater Supply District, we'll talk about that in a minute. We did work out with Mr. Stanley a very successful informal review of engineering site plans for commercial properties where we do a courtesy review, it's a fast review, side-by-side with third-party, and that's worked out well. Freshwater District and county officials inspect. County, right now, Animal Control Service provides service in Castle Hills through the sheriff's office.
I might add, I think they only have two animal control officers for all of Denton County.
Limited service, we think we can provide a lot more service to the citizens out here and do a better job at that. Development permit, the county does issue a development permit through their Public Works Department, this is something relatively new. Mr. Stanley, is that correct? It's fairly quick, but again, they do that now. The Fire Marshal's Office provides fire inspections and plan review. This has been something that's been happening for years and years, so they are inspecting the commercial properties, construction of commercial facilities, and schools. We, again, think we can provide a much more robust inspection program than that. Library services, you can use participating cities. We believe that the state of Texas has restaurant, food handling, established inspections and permitting, I believe those are about twice a year. Eric, is that right?
Yeah, I think so.
Okay.
Get her, miss.
So, let's talk a little bit about the differences of what's, the services that are happening in Castle Hills compared to the city. Right now, again, there's no code enforcement for the city of Lewisville, city ordinances by, for the most part, are not in effect. Buildings, Lewisville Building Inspection, your electrical, mechanical, plumbing, framing, those type of inspections are not conducted by the city. Economic development is not happening from the city of Lewisville out here. Of course, Parks and Recreation is another venue that we think we can provide a more robust service. Right now, the master HOA maintains most parks, there's some that are sub-HOAs. Stacy and her staff are working with Mr. Versour and Mr. Stanley to look into those publicly maintained facilities and parks and green spaces in the infrastructure. Castle Hills residents do qualify for the city's recreation programs right now, I believe. So that's a great thing. And with Thrive coming on, 100,000 square foot facility, multi-generational, opening in spring of 2020, isn't that right, Stacy?
Right.
Yep, it's going to be a great, great facility, we'd love to mow those two communities with that, opening of that building.
Yes, as Eric said, the fees were matched to city of Lewisville fees, I'm going to say at least 15 years ago.
Again, something that we don't provide right now is CIP or bond for long-term infrastructure maintenance, and of course, right now, water sewer, sidewalks, streets are in the city of Lewisville's name as an asset. Denton County Freshwater Supply District has been maintaining that. I feel sure they do have replacement funds, and we're working with Phil's office on that, we're looking into that further down the road. So, the current services by the Freshwater District, they have around 27 full-time employees from maintenance to water to sewer to facilities to water billing, inspectors, that type of thing. They've done a great job out here through the decades of developing the land and making sure there's quality infrastructure going on in that public realm. Again, home builders, developers, commercial, residential, they submit to the Denton County Freshwater Supply District for those, for the building permit, they in turn do that review, and in case of commercial, they'll parallel that back through the county, through the Fire Marshal's Office, through the Public Works Department, and that is such an efficient streamlined process that I know that when we get annexed to the city, it'll be even better. Freshwater Supply District provides those building inspections and those separate trade permits to the commercial and residential properties here. If you think about it, there's a lot of a la carte permits for fences, swimming pools, those types of things that they also permit and inspect. They do, the Freshwater District has water billing to all, to all properties. We're working with them to see how they're doing that. They do some code enforcement through the district employees when they see things instructed without permit, if they see things that are, need mowing or maintenance, they do provide that service. And again, they do the inspection of the infrastructure, whether it be streets, a water leak, sewer leak, things that need drainage, that's all being done through the Freshwater Supply District. Their employees are also involved in their special events, which they have a lot of great events out here, from Fourth of July to seasonal events. Their employees provide staff support to those events. So things of focus in spring of 2019, obviously, will be that additional service and cost necessary by the same level that our residents are looking, that are enjoying to Castle Hills. And we're looking for outside assessments, we've completed the streets, but will we be doing water and sewer and other assessments? Playground equipment, those types of things, and looking at police patrol, I believe that's my segment.
So let's talk a little bit about law enforcement services. As you know, Council, as Eric mentioned, we provide law enforcement services to Castle Hills through our public safety agreement. For police services, that just includes responding to basic calls for service. The cost of that is about $567,000 for this fiscal year. Also, per that contract, the general manager from the Denton County Freshwater District can request expanded services. He can request those for $112 per hour. We've done some of that in January, we actually did some traffic enforcement, some residents had some concerns about some cut-through traffic through neighborhoods, some running stop signs, so we've been doing some running stop signs, so we've been doing some of that. And then as you know, at the January 28 council meeting, we talked about that the general manager had requested some additional patrol through the expanded services. So as of February 1st, we are doing a minimum of eight up to 16 hours of that expanded services patrol in Castle Hills. The first three months, we have, we've set up that 16 hours every day has been filled. Now remember, that expanded patrol, just so you know, we are filling that with an overtime officer. So that is not pulling an officer from our minimum staffing at the city of Louisville. That officer's going out to Castle Hills and doing that patrol on an off-duty basis.
If you go back to that slide, I just want to point out, and this, I know the council knows, but for the audience. So those basic police services, since we adopted this SPA agreement, that's the Strategic Partnership Agreement that was adopted a number of years ago, the Strategic Partnership Agreement allows the collection of sales tax in Castle Hills. So prior to that, the city did not collect the 1% sales tax in Castle Hills. Once we put that agreement in place, which is approved by each one of the individual districts, we were able to step in and collect sales tax. So that sales tax is what is being used to basically pay for the basic police services as well as the fire services contract.
So, once we went to council on January 28th, some of that information that was in the backup memo got out to the press and that created some concerns from some of the Castle Hills residents. One thing that was concerning, we saw a lot of social media posts that we've been trying to get correct information out there. But one of their concerns, and as I can understand, in the backup memo, I told you the hours where we had the most calls for service, and so those were the hours that we targeted, that we were going to be patrolling. And I need to step back a minute. One thing that we were doing, we were replacing, the districts had gone out and contracted through their district budgets to pay $400,000 a year for a third party to bring, to provide off-duty police officer to patrol 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. So they were doing that service. Now, there were some limitations with that because police officers off-duty are limited in what they can do from their enforcement. They can enforce felonies and breaches of peace. Everything else though, that was still resulting in a call for service to our police officers who were responding. So the general manager felt like it would be beneficial if they didn't renew that contract and they contracted with us through the expanded services. And it was a great opportunity for us, especially now as we think about annexation for the police department, so that we can better assess what those needs are going to be at annexation. And also for our officers to get to know the residents and for the residents to get to know our officers. But as I mentioned, there were some concerns. We're trying to address that. James and his team put some information out in the recent Horizon. Chief Dever and I met with the general manager and a resident. We've agreed, we're going to be meeting once a month, coming out to Castle Hills. I believe he's inviting two representatives from each district to attend those meetings. Our first one is March 4th. But just a couple of things that we're trying to address, the, obviously that the money first will come from the SPA, which will be sales tax, tax-driven, as opposed to their own district budgets. If we did 12 hours a day, or eight hours a day, it would be an additional cost of about $328,000. Obviously would be double that if we did 16 hours a day. We're going to continue to look at that and see what's needed. Chief Dever will be evaluating that, making sure that we're meeting the needs of Castle Hills. Some other concerns, because as I mentioned, we were doing some traffic enforcement, there were some concerns that maybe we were just going to be setting a patrol officer up to work radar to increase revenue to the city. Obviously, we're not going to do that. These officers will not be setting up radar. But now, obviously, if they see someone bust a sidewalk, I mean, a stop sign or drive erratically or fast, they're probably going to write a ticket because that's what they do. They're out there to keep everybody safe. But you will not see those officers running radar. Now, if the district, the general manager requests more traffic, as y'all remember, y'all gave Kevin the approval to use his resources as he sees problems out there. So you will be seeing some of those things. There was some concern that that hourly rate of $112.78 was more expensive than that hourly rate that they were paying the off-duty officers. But that rate is, comes from our cost analysis done by a third-party. It calculates the cost of the vehicle, the cost of the fuel, the cost of the equipment, the cost of supervision, records, property and evidence, dispatch, jail, all those services that go along with us providing those services. So the next slide. So again, you gave Chief Dever the approval to use all of his resources at his discretion. We really see right now how the neighborhood resource officers can be a great asset to Castle Hills. Those officers can go out and meet with the, go to district board meetings, they can do crime prevention meetings, they can be out there meeting with the neighbors. If there is a neighborhood problem that's resulting in calls for service, they can handle that. If there is a need for drug enforcement or gang enforcement or street crimes, those resources are also available. So as, you're going to talk about later, one of the things that we are really looking forward to this increased presence out in Castle Hills is the opportunity for us to look at, what are we going to need for police staffing at annexation? You'll see later, Chief Dever's going to be talking about a possible staffing study and I think this information will be great for that. Last, one of the things I did just want to bring to your attention, we do know that our response time in Castle Hills for priority one calls, on average, are two to three minutes higher than they are in Louisville. And that's been the case historically. And when you're looking at priority two and three, that can be as high as 10 minutes. So one thing we think will be a positive of having these officers out there on the expanded services, we're hoping to see that that reduces that response time. And this also gives us great information again, as we look at that staffing study and we look at what we're going to need at annexation. So last, kind of to wrap it up, we think that this is such a positive opportunity for us. The one thing we want to do as the police department, in conjunction with the police department, is get out and talk to the people in Castle Hills at the officer level and at the administration level. We want to be out there, meet with the residents. We want to be able to share our metrics and our dashboard so that they can have real-time data to see what kind of crimes and what kind of activity are happening in Castle Hills. Chief Dever and I, again, will take reports out there, be meeting with them. We want to make sure that our officers develop those positive relationships with the Castle Hills residents, the same ones they enjoy with our citizens of Louisville. And then again, help us with our future annexation needs. That.
Questions before Melinda leaves?
I'm going to share with you this text message I got today from a resident in Castle Hills where the social media issues are still going on. They're basically saying that they have different numbers for what the cost of patrol is, which is not what matches with ours. And they're saying we're basically here to set up speed traps to increase revenue. So this was as of today, and I told the resident who sent me that, I'm like, those numbers aren't right. But I mean, it's an ongoing process. It's far from over, I think.
Absolutely. And we do have that. We have shared the cost analysis. We just had that updated this last year. And so we've shared that with Phil, the general manager, and I think he shared it with a couple of members of the board. And we're happy to share it with anyone. It's just, you know, I think that it's hard, it's hard to grasp, we know as a city, because we work with the budget, the cost to run a police department. And you know, for every call for service, there's going to be a report that has to be generated through records and there might be property and evidence processed. And sometimes it results in an arrest that ends up in our jail and then judicial services to arraign it. So those are education things that we just need to be out making sure that we're educating our public and that is our plan.
Frankly, I'm shocked it's 112 because most professional services start at 125 an hour. Plumbers, IT guys. I mean, so 112 is below market just for commercial services.
And one thing I did want to mention, there's a lot of concerns from the residents that they're going to be, that we're double dipping. And that is because right now, when we calculate that contract rate, it's based on calls for service running June through June. And so we get that number and that number of calls for service is plugged into a calculated number. That's how the next year's contract comes up, how much we charge for the police services. So Chief Dever's working on ways to see if that officer that's doing patrol solves an issue and it doesn't result in a calls for service for a backup officer coming from Louisville to respond to that, then we think there's ways to mitigate those. But we're working through that right now. But we understand their concerns. We have an open dialogue. We want to make sure that the residents of Castle Hills feel comfortable with what we're doing and that they understand what our plan is.
I might add too, when they talk about the traffic tickets that are written and that we're making money off that, 50, about 50% of that ticket goes to the state of Texas, not to the city of Louisville.
It's a first $86, first $89. That's why you can't pay off your ticket with canned food.
That's correct.
Social media.
Yeah, I just had a question. Are we, Chief Dever, are you planning on coming with comps for Castle Hills?
Yes, sir. We do have one scheduled, I believe in March, April, late in March. But we are planning on bringing that out to Castle Hills.
And we had a request already for a presence at National Night Out and we've got that in our plan. So we'll be bringing, all those great things we do for Louisville, we'll be bringing out to Castle Hills.
Richard, you're up next.
Good afternoon, everyone. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Richard Lutke and I have the pleasure of serving as the Planning Director for the city of Louisville. The land uses and zoning was well thought out and addressed in 1996. This slide outlines kind of the six basic commitments made for land uses in Castle Hills. And it deals with a maximum number of multifamily acreage, maximum acreage for all residential types, maximum 30 acres designated for a village center, maximum 80 acres for a town center, maximum 850 for light industrial. But one of the best aspects is a commitment of no less than 450 acres for public and private open space, which really truly makes Castle Hills special. The agreement also specified that all of the, all Castle Hills would develop under the 1996 Louisville zoning ordinance and general development ordinance. So it was kind of set aside and frozen and applied to the entire development over time here in Castle Hills. There were also some other special provisions as part of that agreement. This is a map that planning staff had prepared because as each portion of Castle Hills was platted over the years, the zoning designation was listed on each lot primarily. And so our staff pulled all of the plaits and applied the zoning designations to all of the different areas within Castle Hills. And this is what it looks like and reflects all the different categories that Castle Hills was developed under. Next slide, please. So the 96 agreement does go on and states that all portions of Castle Hills shall be zoned in accordance with appropriate Louisville zoning categories in place at the time of annexation. We also have to keep in mind that state law states that when a municipality annexes new territory, that territory automatically comes in your most restrictive zoning district. So in Louisville's case, that would be our agricultural open space district. And so that's common all over the state of Texas. When new territories annexed, the cities usually have to go right in with the zoning activities to kind of bring the development on the ground into compliance with the current zoning categories within the city. So when we get to that point, we do have some options. The first option would be to just simply rezone all the platted portions of Castle Hills as designated on those plaits. The concern that staff has with that is that those properties were developed under 1996 regulations and the land inside of the city developed under our current regulations and those have been amended constantly over the last 23 years. So there's kind of a discrepancy between the two. And so that could possibly create some non-conforming situations since our districts were, have changed quite a bit since 1996. Another disadvantage is that that straight zoning would not capture the special provisions of the 1996 agreement. Option two would be to rezone all of Castle Hills as a planned development. Planned development is primarily a tailor-made zoning classification for a special area. It's basically, all your regulations are customized, which is what we really did when we designated the zoning ordinance and the GDO from 1996. Another benefit with going with the PD is the fact that we could capture a lot of the special provisions in the 1996 agreement and they would be able to, you know, be carried forward in the future. To put together a PD, we would need to get started on that a little bit early. We would most likely employ a consultant to assist staff and any stakeholders involved with Castle Hills in preparing that. And that is something that we could look at as we start preparing our budget for FY19 and '20. With that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
So if you carry the 96s forward as a PD for Castle Hills, and we have, we're redoing all of our zoning, planning, how do the two eventually merge?
Typically, the PDs, once they're established, then they take priority over any future changes. So again, it'd be kind of a way to memorialize, you know, what is felt to be most important and what's outlined in that PD. PDs can also be amended as conditions change within that area. You can amend those provisions.
And so Chris mentioned that, you know, every day's new and so there may be some changes they want in the future. So we could amend the PD at a later time to take that into account.
But Castle Hills would always have that PD in place going forward.
That's correct.
So.
As you have other PDs in your community.
Right.
Well, that's true.
How many planned developments do we have now, Richard?
I think we have about 10 or 12.
Yes. So we have a number of, they're smaller. You have to have at least five acres should be a planned development.
That is correct. It's very common for master planned communities to have planned development zoning because you really, they're usually so detailed and have special conditions where you really have to customize the regulations. But with our overhaul, it should mesh fairly seamlessly with any new provisions that we have. We'll have to keep that in mind with all of our PDs.
I'm just, there's something in my mind that says this could get confusing later.
Because they, over time, they start to diverge again.
And the beauty, the zoning designations could serve as the base districts in the PD.
I just, I wanted to say something and add to the conversation. So this is not an unprecedented thing, so if you go to the city of Dallas, Uptown has their own PD as well. They have sub-districts and that's kind of the whole sense of how it would be done. With something this large of scale property, you really, I mean, and complexities and having sub-districts of that kind, really to be able to go between two different books, like your main code, and then it becomes very difficult. So we really do want to, as much as possible, have it as a standalone, but with the idea that we can amend it in the future if there are changes that need to be made.
Okay.
I would tell you that Louisville is somewhat uncommon that we don't have more planned developments. If you look at a Plano or Frisco, you're going to see many planned developments. It's very, very common.
Other questions, council?
Good afternoon, mayor and council and audience. For those that don't know me, my name is Keith Marvin. I'm the Director of Public Services for the city of Louisville. And I'm going to talk a little bit about infrastructure. So we talked about infrastructure a little bit last year at this time, just to give you an update. Some of the things that we are looking at are the obvious things, the streets and alleys, street signs, pavement markings, curb ramps, street lights, screening walls, drainage, wastewater and water collection infrastructure. So go to the next slide, please. So we'll start with streets and alleys and we actually assess our streets and alleys through a third-party contractor that drives with a special vehicle that assesses the pavement condition, gives us a pavement condition rating. We assessed actually all of the streets in Castle Hills in 2016 and 2017, their average rating was an 84, which is satisfactory condition. As comparison, our city streets are rated at a 75, so their overall condition is actually a little better than ours. We've not rated the alleys and so we will likely be turning in an action step to include some additional rating in the next budget year to include the condition of the alleys.
And they don't have that many alleys.
There's not that many alleys, but there are some.
Some.
Street signs, they're actually in fairly decent condition. The only thing that we have not been able to do is assess the retro-reflectivity. Essentially, that's how bright do they reflect your lights at night? There are requirements in the codebooks on that. There are requirements in the codebooks on that. Don't know, they may be satisfactory, they may not. It's just something we haven't done. In the event we have to do a replacement of any of them, we, we've counted about 1,125 signs. If we were to have to replace all of them, it's about $225,000 to do that replacement. Curb ramps and ADA compliance. As you all know, we have been doing a lot of work in Lewisville proper to do retrofits to, to bring our ramps and sidewalks up into compliance with the ADA and ProWAG. We've done some assessments in Castle Hills, and many of the ramps here do not meet the current standards. And, and we counted, again, about 1,300 ramps, estimate about 1,200 of those are non-compliant. So we would add that to our retrofit plan, and that represents about $1.4 million worth of investment to bring all of those ramps up to compliance. Streetlights, primarily owned by Coserv Electric, done very much like the ones that we have in Lewisville. There's a tariff that pays the, the maintenance and, and electricity cost for each of those lights. Mostly, they do have decorative lights, which are a little bit more expensive, but that tariff does cover the cost of the maintenance and the electricity. Screening walls, we're still working to evaluate this, and it'll take us some time. You know, some of them are likely individual homeowner, some of them are homeowners association, some of them will be City of Lewisville maintenance responsibility. They do have a variety of materials out here, and, and we would assume maintenance responsibility of those ones that would, would come to us, and, and we would perform that maintenance just like we do in, in Lewisville proper. Next. High stormwater, you may recall, we approved a, a program, I believe it was two years ago now, where we are assessing our own stormwater pipes and drainage infrastructure with video inspection and, and classification and then mapping. So we likely would want to add that, add the Castle Hills infrastructure into that same program and continue that here. There are special features. The photograph on the left is, is a, a nice outfall that, that goes down through that rock area to the pond. And then on the right, obviously, we've got the golf course, but we've got some drainage ways in there. We still need to identify who owns, who's responsible for maintenance on some of that infrastructure, creeks, channels, ponds, et cetera, anything that would be coming to the city. We would have to add that to our maintenance responsibility. And then obviously, that last bullet point, we adopted the, the stormwater utility. We will have to integrate Castle Hills into that stormwater utility, and, and that'll be something that we'll work on over the coming years as well. So next slide. Talk a little bit about our GIS and our as-built drawing repository. These pictures are each taken screenshots from our GIS system. What you see on the left is the water infrastructure, the sewer infrastructure in the middle, and then the stormwater infrastructure on the right-hand side. Much of this, the, there's a lot in there, but then you can see there's also areas where there's obviously not information in there. So we'll be working with our ITS folks to, to continue to update that GIS. We do have, what Eric described as kind of the, the preliminary approved construction plans for about 90% of the, the infrastructure that's in this area. We believe, we, we possess currently about 60% of the as-built drawings. We're still working with district staff and their engineers to, to try to secure the rest of that, and then we'll work on updating our GIS layers to include all of that infrastructure. Next slide. Wastewater collection system. Our, our staff has visited each of the critical sites. As Eric mentioned, there's a, a lift station that serves much of the area on the, on the wastewater side. That's, that's the most critical piece of infrastructure. We do have funding, all approved funding for us this budget year to do more in-depth analysis. And then we have to continue to work with district staff to, to, to better understand the operational methods of, of, of the, the station and, and how they're cleaning and, and taking care of the collection system and that sort of thing, so that when we do take over that operation and maintenance, we can integrate that with our, our own maintenance operations. So, next. On the water side, as Eric mentioned earlier, there is a, two distinct collector, I'm sorry, two distinct distribution systems. North of 544 is, is Lewisville water coming from, from our system, pressured with our system pressure. But south of 544, they have their own water tower, pump station, ground storage tank, and those items are right across the street here. If you get a chance, you can look out the door and, and see them across the street. So those are critical pieces of, of a, of a second distribution system here that, you know, our folks have been able to inspect. And again, we'll continue to work with district staff on how it's operated, reviewing the, the contract with the Upper Trinity Regional Water District, which supplies that drinking water to that system. So this is a big piece that we still need to wrap our arms around, get more information on. And again, you've, you've provided us funding for us to be able to do that. Next slide. So next steps for public services. Again, continue the inventory and, and assessments, continue to, to determine which assets are, would be publicly owned and maintained. Review the long-term CIP planning. Eric mentioned that as well. We do, we will have to integrate those long-term needs into our, our Lewisville long-term CIP program. Make sure that, that we've got everything in the, in the proper order. And then review contracts. We, we mentioned the water. There's also trash, recycling, all sorts of contracts that we have to better understand how to integrate those with our existing contracts. So, and then some of those trash and recycling, you know, when does that contract end? And when it does, do we integrate that with the, the, the trash and recycling contract for the balance of the city?
Who's their provider?
CDW is, or is it CWD? CWD. So that, yeah. It's three letters. I know there's a C at the end of the word.
C sound.
Yes, yes. So that's their current vendor right now.
So they'd be an issue. We have Republic, we kind of separate loans.
Yes, integrating that, yeah. So that's the last slide I have. I'd be happy to answer any questions on the infrastructure.
This is an area, Council, that I think will probably be most impacted by annexation from a staffing perspective. Certainly, police will also, because it's not been full services that have been provided to Castle Hills. Fire, you just built that last fire station, so we, two of the most expensive services are being met. But public services is going to be, as far as staffing, we're going to have our largest impacts up there. And you'll see that. We've got some staffing projections that we're going to be looking at Saturday, and you're going to see some of those impacts in those staffing projections.
So I'm going to talk to you about the water rate component to annexation. If you remember, at last retreat, we were going to engage our water rate consultant that the city uses to answer really some, you know, high-level questions. We weren't ready to do a deep dive into anything yet, but we did have a few questions we wanted to get answered. One was, can the water rates in Castle Hills ex, support the existing debt of Castle Hills? If you remember with the city, the way our structure is, is our utility rates, our user, what our users of our system pay in their water and sewer charges each month, they pay for that infrastructure improvements. They pay for the cost of running the whole system. Well, we would ideally like to set Castle Hills up in the same manner where the water system, the utility system is supported by users and what they are paying into the system. We had the, the consultant look at that, and basically, the way Castle Hills has been structured now is all of their debt, the utility, road, all infrastructure, is supported by that property tax rate that they, their INS rate. So when we looked at that, the question, this question, we found out just from an initial review, it doesn't appear that those water rates at, at our levels, the water rates that we charge our citizens could support that extra debt load on by adding on the utility debt and bringing, at, at annexation, initially at annexation. Maybe later, several years, we could put the debt in with, and the water rates would support that. But, but initially, it didn't look like that could happen. Now, what we did find out was that its service of 1B and through 1F, those districts that are more fully developed, B, C, D, E, and F, their debt can be supported through our city's utility, our city's debt service fund. So the, their values come over, and along with that value, we would refinance that debt. That's an important step in it all. We would refinance the debt at the city's AAA bond rating. That would lower those debt payments, and then we could absorb it through our debt service fund. GNH, they're the most undeveloped. There's still a lot of public infrastructure to do, and that would need to find another vehicle to pay that debt off, which just further, furthered our idea that the developer brought to us about creating a TIRS. It just supported that to keep working on that, that item. The second question was taking a look, just again, high level, what are the rates being paid by the residents of Castle Hills compared to our rates? And when you look at just the Lewisville rates, and we're looking at four different types of volumes here for a typical resident out there, and you look at what Lewisville residents are paying for those volumes compared to the districts, and, and that's an average rate there that we're using for those volumes, you see the variance. Castle Hills residents do pay more for water services. So this is something we wanted to just make sure we understood going in. So because of that difference, there's a couple of things we need to look at. One, Castle Hills employs what's called an inclining block rate or a conservative, conservative-based type of structure. That's actually different than what the city does, which is a volumetric rate. The district, they have a different unit price whether you are a low-volume user or a high volume. If you are very low, you only use 2,000 gallons a month, then you're going to pay at a lower unit cost, a lower per gallon for your water than you would if you were a higher user, say that you use 10,000 gallons a month. With Lewisville, you pay the same unit rate, the same gallon, per, per gallon cost, per gallon rate, no matter if you're, you're that 2,000 gallon user or that 10,000 gallon user.
And, yeah, Council, we looked at conservation-based rates a number of years ago. That Claude was still city manager when we looked at that, you'll remember. And one, one, one thing we looked at was water usage in Louisville. So it, on average, is one of the lowest in, in the DFW area, and that's why we didn't move to that conservation-based structure. If you look at Castle Hills' usage, it's very high. So there's going to be a balancing that we're going to have to go through when we look at those two really unique users. And I know Brenda's going to talk about that a little bit.
Right. You know, really, this is, this is one area where the district, we feel like, is something we need to move toward. But how they've got their structure is, is something we want to move forward with. It's championed by the state. It's, you know, every year, or every drought year we have, we, it, it all enters our mind, should we be working toward that, to, to basically charge users if they're high users of water as opposed to a low user of water. And it encourages water conservation, and one of your big moves, sustainability. It's, it's definitely more toward those lines. So, let's see how much, how good my memory is. So, so this is what we want to work toward.
Julie, Julie.
I didn't hear. Oh, yeah. Sorry. Technical, technical problem.
You guys have, a lot of you guys have it already, so I'll just kind of walk you through while we're working.
While she's looking for that data, Council, Brenda didn't introduce herself when she stood up. This is Brenda Martin, our Director of Finance, who will be retiring at the end of March.
Why do you keep reminding us of her?
I know, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. But, but I, I do want to remind you also that she's agreed to stay with us on contract. She is the expert on the, certainly, the Castle Hills financial analysis. So I, I did want to remind you that Brenda will be continuing to work with us on this issue. And in fact, she's going to be able to give us some expanded abilities, I think, to spend time that we have not been able to do historically with the district boards. And so when she retires and she's got her CAFR done and then all those type of things for Lewisville, she will begin to be present at each one of the district board meetings. So we're going to start doing certainly a lot more outreach and a lot more connection with the community in a, a variety of ways.
Well, I'll just go ahead and keep talking, I guess.
We broke.
I think we're.
Yeah, that's not our computer. It actually is owned by Brian, and so it just went down, and we don't know how to get it back up.
We'll come up right here in a minute.
Okay. Yeah, just to talk on what Donna said, you know, I, I'm excited. It's been great being Finance Director for the City of Lewisville, where you're a dynamic and, and there's always something going on. I can't say I've ever been bored. Sometimes I would like to be bored. That's kind of an interesting concept. But anyway, but, you know, one of the things I've, I've always told Donna, I said, you know, I don't feel like I'm a full-time Finance Director for Lewisville. I feel like I'm a part-time Finance Director for Lewisville and a part-time finance liaison with Castle Hills. I mean, because Castle Hills is so, so diverse, so, so big in what's going on there, and I spend a lot of time there. So I'll be able to devote time and actually a little bit more quality time, I think, to that endeavor. Should I just go ahead? Or you want me to?
I'll see it.
Oh, okay. We'll go to the smaller screen here. Really, there's just a graph that's, or a chart that's coming up that I thought would be interesting to talk, for you guys to have in front of you, those of you who don't have it in your, a book in front of you. I'll just stand over here. That's probably better. There we go. A back, back one, maybe? I don't know. Maybe, were, were we there? Okay. So, yeah, so on Donna's point, one of the things we wanted to make sure, since we, since we want to move toward that inclining block rate, right now, Lewisville, as you can see, a resident, most resident homes has the 5/8 inch water line. So they have this fixed charge of $15.67. You see the district has a fixed charge of $34.75. I mean, that's just starting out before you add how many gallons of water you use. So you see the difference there. And then per 1,000 gallons over a 2,000 base, we start charging at $3.23 a gallon. So if you use 3,000 gallons, you're going to get that. If you use 20,000 gallons, you're going to be at $3.23 per, per gallon. But you see, with the district, depending on where you fall in there, in what category or range for the month, that's the rate you pay for wherever your water usage is for that period of time. So it is truly more of a, of a charge for, for additional or a, a large amount of water usage as opposed to just a flat rate. We actually looked at our July, which is usually pretty summer, our current Lewisville rates, we thought, our Lewisville residents that we currently have. We thought we'd just show you, Council, where they fall. And, and this, this points to exactly what Donna's point was, that our, our residents usually typically don't use as much water as some of the other places in Texas. And you can see there, we don't have very many toward this higher usage area, and most of our people fall within that 2,000 to 15,000 gallon range there. So our next steps, we, like I said, we just took a very high-level look. It was a little too early to start getting into the weeds when it came to water studying and rate study. But what our plans are, is now that we know where the debt, you know, who needs to pay for the debt, where the debt has to be, be allocated to, now we can start working on that rate structure, getting to understand more about how the water cost is over here at Castle Hills. They obviously have different contracts that we do. They have an Upper Trinity contract that could force some different customer classes and different cost buckets that we need to look at. And so we anticipate that for the year 2020, we'll, we will have done a study, we'll come back to you way before then, with that new rate structure, that, that inclining block structure. And we will work toward getting Lewisville on that kind of structure, not the same rate as Castle Hills, but just the structure of it by October 1st of 2020. And then that following year, it's kind of a two-phase approach, we'll, we'll be refining that and getting that, you know, was there anything we need to do, any kind of changes we need to make? So the next year on October 1st of 2021, when we fully incorporate Castle Hills, we're all under the, the same type of rate structure that. all under the same type of rate structure that we envisioned to have. So, and we'll keep you apprised of that.
So, but there will be, everyone understands this, two separate customer classifications.
We anticipate that. We haven't analyzed the cost to that degree, and obviously, we're not going to encompass the water districts with their debt. We found another way to pay for the debt, but there still could be costs over here that does force, and the water usage. If you have two totally different customer classes that have two totally different type of usages, that sometimes will allow for those customer classes and will be able to have two different rates to help just pass on those costs to each of those, each group of those residents and commercial accounts.
And what we don't want to see is the annexation of Castle Hills to cause water rate increases for Louisville residents. So we're going to be very sensitive to that.
Right.
And the reason for that is because upper trinity is so much more
Yes. That is a more expensive contract than our contract with the City of Dallas, yes. Any other questions? Okay, I'm going to turn it over, and we're going to talk about parks.
Afternoon, Mayor, Council, park fans. My name is Stacy Anaya. I'm the Director of the Parks and Recreation Department of the City of Louisville. It was excellent to hear that Castle Hills was developed around the idea that everybody should be a three-block walk from a park. I believe that parks are, or you can find the solution to all the problems in the world. They can begin, and the solutions can be found at parks, and that's an interesting concept, that everybody should be that close. In fact, that's one of our goals as a Parks and Recreation Department, is that everybody in the City of Louisville should be within a 10-minute walk to a park. So we are really kind of a little bit behind Keith in terms of our fact-finding, in terms of the park system here in Castle Hills. I've had an initial meeting with Mr. Stanley to talk a little bit about what the ownership status and which parcels are truly considered public open space within Castle Hills. Some of them are owned and maintained by the individual HOAs. Some of them are owned and maintained by the master HOA. So right now, what we're doing is working together to find out what that ownership level is and who is responsible for each area. We've talked a little bit about what their current maintenance practices are. As we work our way through determining which spaces opens, would be public open space that the City of Louisville will be responsible for, we want to make sure that we maintain or exceed maintenance standards as they are now. Let me go to the next slide. So one of the things that we will do is, once we determine what those open spaces are, is we will use our park standards of care to determine what level these pieces of property currently are in terms of their condition, equipment, condition assessments, in terms of their park amenities, playgrounds, other equipment, their ADA compliance. That's one of the things that we're really sensitive about within the park system, and determine if there's any need for equipment replacement or improvement in terms of ADA. We'll then marry it up with our new standards of care within the department. More than likely, they'll fall under a Level A or Level A-plus, and what those are, are standards and how many times, how frequently we provide maintenance or address issues at a park. And like I said, and what we're looking at right now, most of them follow their Level A. And then from that, we'll develop an annual operating budget for staff, equipment, what a capital replacement budget would look like there, and also determine is whether our staff will do that, or if it's something that we contract with to move forward. So that's in terms of maintenance. In terms of development, what we need to be aware of is our Parks, Recreation and Open Space Master Plan doesn't need to be updated until 2023 or when we annex Castle Hills, because by Texas Parks and Wildlife Guidelines, anytime you increase your population by more than 12%, you have to do a new master plan. The hike and bike trail plan was drafted in 2011 and approved in 2013, so this will be about a time that we need to update it, which is great, because as they talked about, there are a lot of trails throughout Castle Hills area, and we're going to need to figure out how we can connect those, to those trails with our planned trails, our current existing park system. And so we'll need to figure out when that's going to happen. We'll need to, they talked a little bit about some of their plans for public trails and open spaces and see how that integrates into ours, and like I said, the connectivity, how it impacts our 10-minute walk to a park ratio. It sounds like that's going to maybe improve it. And when do we start the development of that master plan? With anticipation of annexation happening or wait till it happens? And then developing the parks that we already have planned out here in terms of East Hill Park and some of the other neighborhood parks? And those are some of the things we'll talk a little bit about tomorrow.
Can I mention, we've had some conversations with Dr. Rogers related to some properties?
Yes. Donna just mentioned, there is a school planned on, just off
Josie Lane.
Which we are talking about, of having a joint-use, maybe a neighborhood park that we would build in conjunction with the school district in that area. There's also Indian Creek, which lends itself to a great green belt trail system that we're interested in developing. So those are ways that we can immediately connect with Castle Hills from a park and development standpoint. And then as Mr. Ferris indicated, we already offer our recreation services to the residents of Castle Hills. So as soon as Thrive is up and ready to go, they'll be welcomed here. Any questions? All right.
My name is James Kunkke. I'm the Director of Community Relations and Tourism. As we start thinking about needs for public engagement as it relates to Castle Hills, I want to start by telling you something that, Mayor and Council, you already know. Castle Hills is a well-branded and strongly self-identifying community. We need to understand that is not going to change after annexation, that after annexation, Castle Hills will still be well-branded as an upscale living experience, and Castle Hills will still strongly self-identify as Castle Hills. And I'm telling you, that is not a bad thing. It actually can be a very good thing for Castle Hills and for Louisville. There's a precedent for this with Valley Ranch in Irving, also Las Colinas. There's two precedents for that in Irving. Valley Ranch in particular, primarily residential, upscale, part of Irving, self-identifies as Valley Ranch. People who live there say, "I live in Valley Ranch." When they leave the Metroplex, they say they live in Irving, and they participate actively in Irving lives, but they live in Valley Ranch. You're going to see much the same thing here. However, we do have a couple of challenges. And one of those is, we really want to move to the point where Castle Hills residents also engage with and identify with Louisville as equal residents of our community, equal participants in our processes and our activities. Right now, a lot of the residents do activities in Carrollton. A lot of youth sports is done in Carrollton. A lot of residents visit the Carrollton Library, even though we know, is Carolyn here? Even though we know our library has services that nobody else in the Metroplex can match, we need to get those residents from Castle Hills to come to our facility. So we've been doing some engagement processes. You see a list here, I won't read the list to you, you've seen a lot of them. But we have already been reaching out to Castle Hills residents through our regular communication methods for a couple of years now, since we knew annexation had become a short-term window. We've added some additional specific Castle Hill outreach in the past few months. We started a monthly mailer called the Castle Hills Horizon. I put examples at your table. The first one was in January, second in February, and that is going out through the assistance of the Castle Hills Mail Service. That is going to every household in Castle Hills, and is information specifically tailored for them. Nothing secret about it, it's just tailored for that audience. We even did, you remember, you've noticed the utility boxes that are wrapped in Old Town Louisville. We wrapped one out here in Castle Hills, just to get the name out there, the images out there to remind people, hey, we want you to come in and be a happy part of our community. I want to focus more on this second and final engagement slide. Well, I was going to, there I am. These are things that are in the works now, and you're going to hear more about some of these later on in the retreat, so I won't go into any detail really unless you have questions. Fire Department, Firehouse Number Eight has opened now, and there will be an open house event coming up, to which Castle Hills will be broadly invited and encouraged to attend.
March 11th?
March 11th?
5:00 p.m.
I did not have that date or time, now I do. They just said, I learned things today. March 11th, 5:00 p.m. We'll be publicizing that in the March issue of the Castle Hills Horizon. In addition, you might recall when we had the special election last year, we held an open house meeting in Castle Hills that was very well-attended, where we had a lot of city staff there from various departments to talk about the city. For many residents of Castle Hills, that was their first introduction to city administration. We are now ready to start doing those on a quarterly basis. We haven't scheduled this one yet, have we?
No.
Okay, good. And the first one is in March. It's a secret, they'll tell me what I need to know. The first one coming up in March, and we'll do those quarterly. Might be a week shift here and there if the schedule is tight, but the intent is quarterly to come out here, bring some officials out here from various departments, give an update on where we are, get questions, get feedback. We can't always fix every problem, but we like to do what we can. We also are looking, and you'll hear more about this during the retreat, we're looking for ways to add Castle Hills residents to some of the city boards and commissions that you appoint. You'll hear more, some of them, state law doesn't allow it, charter doesn't allow it, but there are some great opportunities to get Castle Hills residents involved in that decision-making advisory process. In addition, this fall, Castle Hills residents, for the first time, will be eligible to participate in the Citizens University class, run through Julie's office. And we hope to have several Castle Hills residents go through that and become well-versed on how Louisville operates. And then the last one down there, you'll see, well, two more. One, you already heard, Brenda's going to be attending all the board meetings, the district board meetings. But in addition, when we get to the 2040 planning process, which you'll hear more about in the retreat tomorrow, or Saturday, or both, we look to include Castle Hills residents in that process as well. So everything we're doing is trying to make those residents feel welcome, let them know that we're glad this annexation is coming along, it's going to benefit us, it's going to benefit them, and we see no distinction between Castle Hills residents and Louisville residents once annexation takes place. Any questions?
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. My name is Chris Lee, I'm the ITS Director. For those of you who do not know, and I just wanted to speak to you quickly about areas that we've identified as far as infrastructure that we're going to need to connect via network.
I see Neil looking at his book. We did go back and add this slide. When I was going back through Final Run, I noticed it was missing.
Okay. So with that being said, there are six locations that we've identified, three of which are currently standing here today. One of them's the water distribution plant that Keith had mentioned, right in front of this building. Another, we've got a lift station over here off of King Arthur. And then there's one existing traffic intersection, but to my understanding, within the next two years, we're planning on adding three more. And so those will be the same in correspondence to what we're doing with the master communication plan. We're looking at leveraging point-to-point communication, hitting our Keeley Tower asset for those initial network connectivity issues, but long-term, Unite Public Networks, UPN, we've got fiber currently running out here to 544 to Killian, as well as to the elementary school here in Castle Hills. So for long-term communications, that's something that we want to look at leveraging. Furthermore, we'll need to look at the RF system as it pertains to the SCADA. So that's another aspect of what we're doing network-wise. Other than that, one slide, any questions? Thank you for your time.
I think our city attorney is back up.
Well, I'm doing this. No, I'm doing this phone. Yeah? Good. Okay.
So this is just our next step on annexation. We have to amend the 2019 amendment. To extend it, we're going to do three years. It's going to add new commercial land, and we're moving the golf course area for conversion to single-family homes. And so there's some exhibits that'll change that out. Those are the two major things we're going to do on the amendment. And I've already sent my draft over to the district attorney, to the district's attorney. So as soon as he makes his changes, we can get those to the wards. Then we'll need another amendment in 2021 where we will remove the, right now, the SPA agreement says that we will not annex for full purposes, that it's a limited annexation for sales tax purposes only. So we'll have to take that language out and put in a full annexation date, which we anticipate will be sometime in 2021. And other than that, we're just going to monitor this legislative session to make sure that there aren't any changes to the annexation laws.
I think we talked about annexation. I think it was hot last year.
Yeah, I'm not aware of any that would affect the SPA ability to annex at this Questions, Council? This slide just gives you a recap of the steps that are going to be taken between 2019 and 2020 and 2021 related to annexation. We'll revisit some of these issues the final day of retreat, those issues that have dollar cost. I'm going to be asking your direction on that. I'm not going to read these slides, but I will stop to see if you have any questions related about timing. Mr. Ferris is our Castle Hills liaison. He is the driver behind all of the steps necessary for Castle Hills annexation. I will tell you, this is probably the most complex project that the City of Louisville has ever taken on. We are annexing a small city. We want to make this as smooth as possible for both the residents of Castle Hills and those of Louisville. Any questions? So we have a final piece to this, and this is really something that came out of Councilman Ferguson's pitch last year related to participation of Castle Hills in Louisville activities. Julie's going to cover that information for us.
Ben. So at last year's retreat, you asked us to look and see if we could add Castle Hills members to some of our boards already. So we have done that research now, and so I'm going to go over it real quick with you. So just one thing I will note, that we did not include boards that do not meet on less than a quarterly basis, so that these could be active board members also. And there's also some boards that are not, were not allowed to have non-residents on per state law, or they just very rarely ever meet. So, those boards are the Planning and Zoning Board, state law prohibits that, the Park Board, the Charter prohibits that, and the Charter Review, the Charter also prohibits that. Just a quick note that we will be appointing Charter Review in fall of this year, so you might be thinking about board members that you want for that one. So the next slide, I'm not going to go over all of these, but again, these are boards that don't meet on a regular basis, or state law does not allow us to put these non-residents on the boards.
Julie and I talked about various boards. You have several, like Housing Finance Corporation, Industrial Development Corporation, that haven't met in many, many, many years. So what we don't want to do is be able to, you could, I think, on some of those boards, put a Castle Hills resident, you'd have to change the bylaws, but then they would never meet, and that seems kind of beside the purpose. So, anyway, that's why we took those out. And then you'll remember, some boards, like Crime Control and Fire Control, this has been a little controversial in the districts, the city council does sit as the advisory boards for those two issues, and that's primarily because they do generate quite a bit of revenue, and the city council has the best knowledge related to overall city revenues and the best ideas related to usage of those revenues.
So the first board that we're going to look at is going to be the Arts Board. The Arts Board does have some places that have specific requirements. Not all of those are Louisville residents, but they may have to serve either in a business that has over 100 employees, be employed in a professional managerial position by a hotel, or an education-based, LISD or one of the colleges in the area, and then someone that represents the artistic community. So this is, the next slide is going to show a list of those places on that board. It's also showing which term that they're currently in. This board has had some, a little bit of turnover in it, so most of those board members are fairly new in their first term. Alda Berry, is it, I think it's Alda Berry, is our current hotel representative right there, and he has been on there for some time, and he's a very active board member. So a couple of the options that you have on the Arts Board. You could put someone that serves in, that is employed in one of those positions right now, that they do work in Louisville and live in Castle Hills, if you like. Your other option, and the medical, the position number one on that board is serves from the medical, from, I just told, sorry, blah blah.
Yeah, it's the hospital, and you have your naming proxy group at the hospital. That naming proxy group
Actually expires
That naming rights agreement actually expires this year. I have been notified by the hospital that they're not going to continue that naming rights agreement with the city. That's why they have always had that seat on this board. So if we had a Castle Hills resident that works for some business in Louisville, then you wouldn't have to change your ordinance related to the Arts Advisory Board. They would be automatically eligible to serve in that seat.
Does it have any reach out to Bakersfield? Why I have a feeling that there's a lot of girl for Louisville, Castle Hills residents that might use that facility, and they might be interested in naming rights.
No, no, sir. I have not done that yet, but that's a great idea.
I'm happy to do it.
Your other option right now is we could look at the place number seven, that is the artistic community position. That person currently is a Louisville resident, but you could look for someone that is employed in that capacity or is representing that community that could serve in that position that lives in Castle Hills. Your other option is to consider changing the ordinance and allowing for Castle Hills residents to serve on the Arts Board, and those would be in places four, six, eight, and nine. That, okay, is that good? Okay, all right. Next is Animal Services. Animal Services also has specific requirements for a number of the positions that are on that board. So this committee, as you see, that has to have a veterinarian, one county or municipal official, one person whose duties include the daily operation of an animal shelter, and one representative from an animal welfare organization. And they have to meet at least three times a year, and currently, they meet quarterly.
That state law is crazy, because it requires us to put a staff member on an advisory board. And we normally don't do that. Our staff serves as support, but the state law does require.
This board has a lot of long-tenured members on it. As you can see, we've got someone that's in their ninth term already, so this is one of our boards that, we've got very, very long tenure on there. So go ahead and go to the next slide. So this one, you could revise the ordinance to allow Castle Hills residents to serve on that one, and that would be very easy to do. Our next board is Community Development, and these members shall be citizens or business owners in the city of Louisville. This is a seven-member board. They meet monthly. They are also a very active board, and there's no special, there's no special requirements for the board members at this time. And again, there's the length of tenure on this board so far. So you can appoint a Castle Hills resident that owns a business in Louisville right now, if you'd like to, because that's part, that's allowed for the ordinance right now, or we could, you could revise the ordinance to allow Castle Hills residents to serve on that board prior to annexation. Any questions? Library Board is next. The Library Board, because it's a seven members, and they must be qualified voters of the city. And that's the tenure on this board also. We do have a few that have been on this board for a number of years also. So this one, you could revise the ordinance to allow Castle Hills residents to start serving before annexation. The Zoning Board of Adjustments, these members, it consists of five members with two alternates on this board. There also is one member that serves on this board that comes from Planning and Zoning too. And Planning and Zoning is required to be a resident of Louisville and own property, so that position would still have to do that. They also act as the Industrial Waste Sharing Board and the Contractor Registration Board. So the ordinances and the local government code for those two boards are silent as to the residency that's required for that. Again, this is the length of tenure for this board. So at this time, no changes would be required. They can start serving right now, except for the one spot on there, that is a Planning and Zoning representative. 2025, that was created and the members were appointed at the October 6, 2014 meeting. They serve in an advisory capacity. They also serve as a Blue Ribbon Capital Planning Committee, and they're responsible for reviewing and prioritizing staff capital project requests.
So you just created that board. Really, technically, a temporary board. There's no ordinance that was created for that board. So I think that you could give direction for us to add any number of members to the 2025 committee that you wanted. So really, it would take direction from the council, but not specifically a change in ordinance.
And it's the tenure on that board right now. Again, you can appoint now if you want to, to that board. Old Town Design Review Committee, this is a five-member committee, and this also has specific requirements for some of the board members. You need one person who owns real estate and resides in the Old Town Design District or Old Town Center Design District. Three, that's, no, you're okay, you're okay. And three residents who also own real estate within the city, and one Old Town Business Representative who is employed within the Old Town Design District. So membership requirement is that they own real estate and reside in Old Town. Residents who own real estate within Louisville, Old Town Business Representatives.
We have people on there today that are not Louisville residents, or only on the board because they own real estate.
And the tenure. So you can change the ordinance to allow one resident that owns property in Castle Hills, or we can, and/or, we can find a Castle Hills resident that is employed within the Old Town Center Design District. So it's up to count. Did you want to take this slide? Okay.
So council, I do need direction today related to which boards, if you want us to proceed with the change in ordinance for certain boards, which boards you prefer, or do you want to take some more time? Now Julie starts bringing you information, Julie, in May?
Yeah, we start advertisement in March and April, so we would need to know fairly quickly what you would like to do.
Most council's pleasure.
Can you start with Arts Advisory?
Could we hold off on this until after we have the mayor's presentation on boards and commissions?
So the mayor is going, he has a pitch related to looking at some changes to, really, the emphasis on service, tenure, time on boards, but that certainly can be taken into account. What we are concerned about is, you do have a lot of tenure on some boards, and so you may deem a board to be included, but in the long run, you may not have any openings if you don't force some changes. So that's just one thing I think that TJ was trying to get to, that you are going to want to take into consideration.
I think specifically if we're going to be talking about that tomorrow.
What I will be talking about primarily is, if the council wants to have a replacement of people, then we have to do it.
Right.
But that if, you know, I don't have a problem with people being on things for a long time.
But decision point two, right here, speak specifically to that, right? So I make decision point two here, but then I make a different decision after having a conversation about it tomorrow or Saturday, then we're just going to have to come back and answer this question again.
We can certainly delay it if that's council's wish, to Saturday, that's when you have that discussion.
Can we do it, Dan?
It probably makes sense to do it, Dan. I think, you know, it's, some of the things, some of the things play off each other's own, and you can, you can make rotation, or you know, put a tenure limit, plus the Arts Advisory. We put a tenure limit on Arts Advisory, but right now, the only way to get on Arts Advisory from Castle Hills is to be an artist.
That's correct.
And so you're still back to, okay, well, what do I do with the ordinance in order to open that door a little wider?
You do. That's, that's correct.
And I'm picking that as just one example, but there are several of those that fall in that same bucket, that you can set a tenure limit, but it's not going to solve the problem.
That is correct. Oh, wait a minute. Okay. The city attorney says we cannot take this up on Saturday because of the way it's posted.
We can put it on Monday, like the next.
A council meeting.
A council meeting.
Okay. Let's do that.
Is that direction?
You're just a barrel of laughs.
Okay, so we will delay until...
We're going to have to go on council, we're going to change anything.
Yeah, but that's going to be another council meeting. We're going to have to get direction, then we're going to have to rewrite the ordinances. So time is getting short.
Yeah, and that's the only thing that worries me.
And we don't, we don't need, we don't have a whole lot of things that we're shot at, anyway.
No, we don't.
So do we want to just go ahead and do it?
I would recommend you go in and talk about it.
Yeah, let's go ahead and talk about it. So Arts Advisory Board, you can set a tenure limit or force a rotation. It doesn't open the door for anybody to get to Castle Hills their office. Only way you're going to open the door on Arts Advisory is to change, to make up a board. Period, over and out.
Revise the ordinance.
So revise the ordinance.
Agreed.
Okay, what's your criteria that you would change it to?
So, you know, I'll open that discussion as, I would, I would be more inclined to add the positions than to take positions away, you know, the general positions that currently require to be a Louisville resident. So, and I'm going to add up to two people. I hate boards that get really vague, so.
So actually add two?
Well, I think too, if you look at the balance, the way we looked at our residential districts, you know, they're kind of one in five, so that's, kind of puts them in the one in five representations.
This is already a non-member board. I wouldn't, that's a big board. That's up to council, but that's a larger board.
I hate big boards, but I think add two positions.
Counsel.
So would that be permanently, so it'll get let go?
Yeah, I think that's the real question that I'm wrestling with, is is this permanently or is this temporarily? And because at some point, once their annexation, they qualify.
So I would suggest, and the city attorney can correct me, that you could write the ordinance, that the, that the two seats are added until such time as annexation occurs, and it goes back to a non-member board. But the trick there is then two people have to come off, because now the board is shrinking back to nine.
But if we just, I mean, to me, it just makes sense. Four, five, six, eight, nine are open to residents of Louisville or Castle Hills.
That would be the easiest change.
Instead of saying that you have to, had to be from Castle Hills?
You would just open those seats to residents of Castle Hills.
I could do that.
Is that consensus, council?
Yes.
Okay, Animal Services.
It's a little, it's a little weirder, but it's kind of the same thing. You could do the same thing.
Being on that board, I think you may want to just, that one, you may want to just take it to nine, because the people who are on there are very committed to the Animal Services Advisory Committee.
It's also a dog-centric board, which always bothers me.
That's, that's not.
Do you want to do a place for a cat person?
Just kidding.
I think I'd do one cat person, one bird person.
Okay, you knew what I was going to say.
I'm not getting into what animals the people like.
And I'm willing to give down to the birds, so.
Thank you. So are we saying, thank you, councilman?
You're welcome.
Or a horse person.
A little bit of everything. So are we saying to add two members to this board?
I would say yes.
And I'm okay with that, because the size of the board.
Because having served with those folks for the last couple of years.
So what I'm hearing is that we would open places two, three, six, and these two new positions to Castle Hills members?
As long as it's Louisville, and/or for Castle Hills.
Yes, sir.
We don't have to change the ordinance at annexation.
No. No, I think Liz could write the ordinance such that, you know, it's temporary to get us to annexation. We wouldn't have to do another passage. I'm looking at her.
Well, we're adding two members, right?
All right, you're going to add two members permanently, but, right.
I don't even think it's a change that really is.
Okay. CDBG?
So I'm going to bust out there on this one. I would love to see us add two people to this board even if this weren't the issue, because there's a lot of work to be done here, and attendance sometimes is a little dicey with this board, and I think the additional members would make it easier for them to get their job done regardless.
Well, do they have to have a form to vote?
To vote, yeah.
Yes.
Doesn't have a form, not have an attendance, make it tougher the better it is?
They can.
But it would mean that you have to, or it just depends on whether, what form is for them.
I mean, you'd go for...
They're going to increase what, they're going to increase what...
One person.
One.
Like, one person. Which if you think about it, probably got five people, and the CDBG is, that's a lot of work. So I'm okay.
I agree with that.
Okay, we'll add two people to CDBG. Library Board? Right in the two positions, and all other positions are open to Castle Hills residents also, right?
Yes.
No, they're still in CDBG. I don't want to close it. Somebody will tell them to be quiet. Library Board? No, don't close the door. We just need to make sure they're quiet. Messages of being quiet. Library?
Well, I'm not going to say anything, because my wife's on, so let somebody else do.
I would say the same thing there. Add two members, open up the Castle Hills.
And open all seats up to Castle Hills, plus two members. CBOA?
This one, I think, makes sense.
I would leave that alone.
Because it's not, they're not going to be judging their community. They're only going to be judging Louisville. I think that makes more sense to keep it the way it is.
I'm definitely with you.
So no change to CBOA?
I'd leave CBOA alone.
What are we going to do when we don't annex Castle Hills? If that, if that does...
You can always amend the ordinance again.
Right.
Oh, my God. We have the DCTA now.
Mayor just freaked everybody out. She just made news.
So, Mayor, council, that's certainly why we waited for this discussion until after that TIF was established. 2025?
It's a big board now. Their attendance is pretty good.
Their attendance is good, and I will tell you, it's very nice to have members on the 2025 that have been there since the development of the 2025 plan.
This is one where tenure is an advantage.
It is an advantage.
The only concern I have is, as, just starting up, is as we start rolling into looking at a next, this is 2035, 2045, whatever that happens to be, while their input is important, I would hate to see this board just convert into an imperative to a panel committee. You know, one of the reasons you have this, these vision incorporate is out there is to get new thoughts and new ideas. So I think it's something we need to look at later on, if we're looking to go down the road. I worry that there's an expectation that, well, I'm on 2025, so now I'm on 2024.
You know, and I'm kind of in the same boat, which is that once 2025 officially is done, it'll be done, and then it's another advisory board, and it's a new day.
So no change at this point to 2025?
I just, there's no, I don't see the reason to introduce Castle Hills into 2025. It's taking us to 2025. The plans are... The plan's already adopted.
I would slightly disagree with that. Not that they're going to add any value to what's already been planned, but to at least get them into what's going to happen in the plan.
But that opportunity is going to be there with the next, you know, advisory board for their future.
Yeah, I think if you're building a 20, let's just call it a 2040, you're probably doing that by 2022.
Yep, which is right after annexation, so.
Is that the time for you to add Donna?
Very likely, sir.
So welcome to the game.
Yeah, because I thought they were, you're doing this in the fall, right?
So, yeah, we'll be talking about that tomorrow, a public engagement process that will be occurring really over the next two years, but certainly it would make sense to have that 2040 committee appointed with Castle Hills residents after annexation. So I'm hearing create, whatever you determine.
Let's see if a few of the people that have said anything here on the 2025.
I'm all in, as it is.
And the last board for consideration would be your Old Town Design Review. I'm hearing no change?
I don't want to change it. It's Old Town.
Okay, counsel, I believe that's all I needed. Julie, do we need anything else? Look at that, exactly 3:30. It is time for the bus tour. Do we want to take a slight break?
Probably a slight break, so counsel, there are two buses.
We're adjourned for the day. Thank you.